This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of July 18th, 2022. Call the order, please.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noack is excused. Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Here. Let's rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just, fair, and all.
Okay. Approval of the, I'm sorry, the agenda. Entertainer motion for that.
It's almost.
Port.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi. Any proposed modifications to the agenda? Prove the minutes for regular enclosed sessions of July 5th, 2022. Any issues or changes? Citizens hearing before council on agenda and non agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns if you'd like to do so and you're alive in the room. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. And this is the only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address council. And then we'll check the internet after that. So if I have anyone like to come up, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kingsley Kraft. My address is 519 North Second Avenue. I just wanted to talk about the Culligan Plaza redesign today, and I'd like to ask the council and the committee that designed the layout to reconsider their design. I'd like to see more green space and possibly the tower removed and added, and specifically, I'd like to see new trees and larger planters installed. I'm a downtown resident. I've lived here a long time now. I went away to U of M and I got my degree in human ecology and urban planning and design, which specifically studied the intersectionality of sustainability in all fields. And after graduation, I got a job here in town as the design and beautification intern at the DDA, where I continued to work for over three years in total, graduating into the marketing and outreach coordinator. And I'm extremely proud of the work I did there at the DDA and the opportunities I had to impact the downtown community's physical space, grow community connections, and tell our downtown story. I say all this to lay out where I'm coming from and because as someone who experienced the brutal criticism of public service firsthand, I try to be mindful of my feedback and criticism. And as someone who worked at the DDA, I do understand how the process works. I agree the plaza needs to be updated. As an iconic gathering and meeting spot for our community for decades, Culligan Plaza should be accessible to all and easy to navigate. I know I'm extremely grateful to our past generations for creating that space as a beautiful, welcoming, multi-use space where we can all pause for a moment to linger, enjoy the street performers, eat ice cream cones with our families, meet our friends, and before we go to dinner and watch the Christmas tree lighting. When I saw the proposed redesign, I was surprised and disappointed, and I knew I had to speak up. Judging by the reception on Facebook, I'm not alone. The design is not really sustainable. It doesn't seem to be truly timeless, and it doesn't seem like it would last. I take issue with the lack of green space and the light up tower that seems to be taller than the federal, first federal building and doesn't really appear to have any function. It doesn't seem to align with the identity that multiple community organizations like the CVB, the city, the DDA, and business owners came together to create when sanctuary of the Great Lakes Movement was born in the early 2000s. Having pockets of green space in cities, even ones as small as Alpena, is crucial for the well-being of our residents. Being in nature, even the simulated kind, can reduce stress and promote happiness and even healing. That's why so many of our hospitals have green spaces on or around their campuses. Concrete plazas are really common, and the most sustainable and successful ones establish in built environments marry natural space with space made for people. And I think specifically of a plaza, I spent a lot of time on a U of M's campus, which had trees, but was mostly a concrete plaza with a piece of art in the middle. It's, I'm sorry, I lost my spot, but the plaza redesign really needs to, oh, here it is. Okay, sorry. Transient spaces like this are really important for our communities, and they need to be beautiful, too. Otherwise, people don't want to stop there. They don't want to linger in our community and like go the extra cross the streets to explore our shops and all the cool stuff we have to offer. And they end up being redesigned every new generation, which is more money the city ends up spending in the long run. Spaces like this need to be a bridge between our generations. This plaza need redesign needs to focus on that, especially if youth and rec funds are going to be used. Why not make the space something that not only reflects the vision of past generations, but also something that's kind of a love letter to our next generations? I've had the chance to speak with two years' worth of students in a high school class that wanted to present what they thought our downtown should be. And the biggest takeaway I had is that they want to feel like they belong and that there's a space for them in our community and that they have a voice. I was continually impressed with them and inspired by them. A plaza in a park is the perfect chance to do something like this for the youth in our communities, especially those who have outgrown our playgrounds and outside of the library don't necessarily have much space where they can exist without having to spend many or seem like a nuisance. Why not give some students in our community a chance to have a say in something like this and maybe have a chance to work with a mentor to bring a piece of art to that space as well? I'd love to see the design reconsidered. Definitely update the fountain, level it off, make it ADA accessible. And I don't fully understand the concept of the tower, but I appreciate all of the work that went into putting something together. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Kingsley. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Melissa Timrek, and I have lived in Alpena for just over 30 years, and this is the first time I've ever felt the need to come and speak publicly. And I'm also talking about the plaza space. Why disrupt a perfectly pleasant space for $200,000? Why tear out the infrastructure of the current fountain to move it and spend to install a smaller fountain in the corner? Why are we turning a community gathering place into a place that people will just walk past? In the new design, with the brick wall down, it does not show how there will now be cars viewable, and we are now sitting on the edge of a parking lot. The new design shows eight tables. We currently have four, and out of those four, two do not have an umbrella. So maybe we can just add umbrellas to the two tables that are missing. It would be four tables with four umbrellas. We could easily add an additional four tables shown in the design for less than $200,000. We've seen the Facebook comments. Hadn't thought about it before, but now we will always think of it as a family video tower if there is a tower there. It does, and then I asked my own children, I wanted some of their comments. It does not look like the space for the new design benefits the public in any new way. It's not bringing anything new to the space. Who wants to look at a weird light cube? Why are they getting rid of the fountain? So instead, let's use the $200,000 to enhance fixture items such as park benches, tables, gazebos in our current city areas that need to be updated. Use the money for educational or recreational gathering activities for the current space. Let's add a new space for $175,000 and use $25,000 for the current space to make it accessible. The Culligan Fountain Plaza area has a tradition within our community. The Christmas tree, the fountain, if we want to attract families and keep our current youth and families, keep the fountain, keep the current space, and use the money to update or develop other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Dan Young, and we own Players Pub on 113 South Ninth. We're excited and in favor of the DDA expansion of the west end of downtown. This will allow us to gain access and funding available from the MEDC, help market and promote businesses, help rehab and improve properties in the district, and arguably help create more jobs and housing by expanding the growing businesses. I took time today and I called a number of businesses that are very excited about it if you decide to move forward. I talked to Andrew Kowalski, he's on the board, the target board. He was in favor of it. Obviously, Players Pub is. I talked to Frank Aegis in that corridor from Frank's Key and Lock Shop, Matt Franklin, Sports Page, Pam Richardson from Star Staffing, Amber Bays from Dairy Queen, Brian Winters bought the old Zonair Building, John Fisher from McInerney Car Dealership, Jagar David from the Cracker Barrel, Ed Klimcheck from Model Printing, Justin from Muffler Man, and Matt and Melissa Hallid from Clem's. So I went through and we've done a good survey, but just to talk to them and hear the excitement in their voices for the potential growth for all these businesses. We've all been through that area, and we know that's the next area of improvement and growth, I believe. But I just wanted to come out and say that there's a big positive energy that we'd like to see that grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
My name's Will Thomas. Live at 313 South Sixth Avenue. I'm a transplant from California. Been here about three years. I did see the computer-generated rendition of the plan for the fountain area. Despite the strange obelisk formation that you want to plan put there, the scale was all wrong. It was really hard to place myself in that space, given the rendering just seemed way off. It seemed like half that parking lot would have to be gone just to make that space work with the scale of the objects in the picture. That being aside, being from California, my whole life, I experienced progress for the sake of progress and no substance to developments. The towns were pretty much a conglomeration of housing developments, and with the proposed improvements to the infrastructure in the area, because there was no cohesive nature, just exacerbated the differences between neighborhoods, one street completely different than the other. Alpena, I've noticed, has so much of a cohesive feel to the downtown area, the fountain area. Everything seems to fit. Nicolet Bank Building, not so much, but fountain seems to be the first part into the transition into the downtown area where everything seems to be like it's meant to be there. The new design doesn't seem to fit at all. The family video tower that I've seen people talk about, I didn't, I wasn't here long enough to see go inside family video, but I knew it right away when they mentioned it. Doesn't seem to be right. The lack of green space is an issue. I know that there are certain improvements that need to be made to the fountain area, like ADA access to the fountain itself. It's just stairs, I did notice that. But there's so much more that could be done that is less of an extreme overall change to the area and something that fits more with the feel of downtown. That seemed completely out of place and stuck out like a sore thumb, even being an off-scale computer rendition. What I could envision being there, what they intended to show in that image, I don't see it working for that space. One of the reasons why I left was because of so many of the issues that I saw every day, just a mess of no planning or people communicating with each other or situations like this where you could actually speak to a local council and actually make things make sense to everybody. And so I think I can speak for a lot of people in that that design doesn't make sense to me.
All right. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Anyone else live? Anybody on the internet? Okay. I'm just going to make one just really quick point about the Culligan Plaza. I can't encourage anyone, either in the room or on virtual, to view our meeting from that day. I'm not, it's not perhaps going to change your mind if you don't like the obelisk thing. It's not going to change your mind, but if, but during that meeting, we had a presentation that was out here, and there was a computer-generated one on our screen, which I think we'll show on the meeting if not. But it brings a whole lot more of the history of how that, how that plan even came together and what all of those, the significance of those things are. May be helpful to you and it may, and it may not be, but I just, just relying completely on, on what was printed in the newspaper and presented on, on the radio, I think there might be a lot of value to at least getting a little bit of a historic background on what is being presented for Culligan Plaza. Not that your, not that your opinions don't matter, because they do. What you guys have said here tonight is a big deal. We want to make sure we get this right, but I can't encourage you enough to watch our meeting on YouTube. You can, you can access it from our website. That way you get the whole, the whole history, who designed it, who worked on it, why some of those things have to be made, those decisions had to be made, and why some of them just were made. So I'll leave it at that and hope that you do so. Anybody else for public comment? I'm going to close that up. Okay. No public hearing tonight, so our consent agenda is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $354,955.27, and B is to cast a vote for Lee Kilborn to the Michigan Municipal League's Workers Compensation Fund Board of Trustees.
I move we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Thank you. Tonight, we've got a couple of presentations. The first one is a lifesaving commendation to firefighter paramedic Adrian Thompson, and Chief Florbus is here for that.
Good evening, council. This is probably the funnest thing I could ever bring to you. It's a, it's a good news story from the very bottom to the top. You know, our EMS system in Alpena County is multifaceted and tiered. There are many people that play a role in it, and when everyone's role is filled, it literally saves lives. It starts with our emergency medical dispatchers at Alpena County Central, and then it goes on to our volunteer first responders in the townships surrounding the city and our full-time first responders in the city, and sometimes off-duty paramedics every once in a while. It then goes in the western area to our ECHO program, which through inter-local agreement with Wilson, Green, Maple Ridge, and Long Rapids, places an additional paramedic in those areas during the day when volunteers are less available and reduces our advanced life support response time by 50%. And finally, it wraps up with our advanced life support ambulance, also through inter-local agreement, that responds to every medical emergency in Alpena County and transports every patient that needs to be transported. So the level of cooperation between the city and the outlying townships in the county is all part of what makes this work so well. But what worked really well on June 4th is Alpena firefighter paramedic Adrian Thompson, while off duty, with her, I believe, mother-in-law and children in her vehicle, from what I heard, was tooling down the road in Wilson Township near where she lives, and she heard a medical emergency on her pager right close by. And so realizing that she was right on top of the call, she pulled in and pulled into the driveway and rendered aid to a critically ill patient until our ECHO unit, Wilson First Responders, and then our city ambulance arrived. As the direct result of her instantaneous response and expert care, having no duty to do so outside the city, off duty, but because of that, the patient survived the event and literally a life was saved. I was contacted by Wilson, by central dispatch, by half our own people. Everybody says, oh, this is great. Look what Adrian did. And I am so proud of her and her whole family. Her, her husband Jeff is also one of our firefighter paramedics, and she has the cutest kids in northern Michigan. So, so for the literal saving of a life while off duty, I'm really looking forward to presenting a departmental lifesaving commendation to paramedic Thompson. And if I could please, would Mayor Walagora and County Commission Chair Bob Adrian come forward to present that award on behalf of both the city and the county? Adrian? Did you want to say a few words, Adrian?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. All right. Next up is the Here on Humane Society Semiannual Report. Mary Egan is here.
Knew I should have brought kittens. Other kids. Let me start by thanking the city of Alpena for not only valuing the work of the Hereon Humane Society in spirit, but by also continuing to maintain a service contract with HHS to house, treat, and care for dogs and cats brought to the HHS shelter in the city of Alpena. We at HHS are very proud to be Alpena's no-kill animal shelter, serving the community for 40 years now. It's an honor to be in partnership with the city, and it's something that we really never take for granted. We are in the midst of kitten season at the shelter, result of a combination of irresponsible pet ownership and the uncontrolled feral cat population. HHS has taken in 150 kittens so far this year and 58 cats. Huge number of those animals were in ill health when they were admitted to the shelter, which means that they need veterinary care. In the first six months of this year, HHS has spent $26,196 on veterinary care alone. That does not include in-house testing, vaccinations, and the preventative medicine that we perform at the shelter. Add the 24 dogs we've admitted to the shelter this year and the cost to care for, house, feed, test, vaccinate, and provide veterinary care for our residents, has cost HHS over $125,000 so far this year. Understanding, though, that a healthy and enriching shelter results in happier and healthy animals, HHS continues to improve the shelter. We've added new doors to the cat colonies to open onto cattios. Those are the cat patios. We like puns at the Hereon Humane Society. That allows cats to safely access the outdoors. We sanded and painted the metal on the outside of the dog runs that are attached to our canine kennels. Retail's boutique inside the shelter continues to expand and change up its inventory, so please come shopping. If you go home with a cat, that's okay. We, in fact, encourage that. Outreach is, is just vital to fulfilling the mission of the Hereon Humane Society. So we continue our weekly meet and greet events at local businesses. We hope that we can continue to make this kitty hall instead of city hall. We hope that we can come back for meet and greets. Warned you about the puns. Our vice president has been taking animals to the Alpena Farmer's Market on Saturdays, and we partner with PetSmart to adopt animals, and we continue to have a robust relationship with the Bissell Pet Foundation. In fact, we've just started a two-week Bissell adoption event at the shelter. So again, if you're in the market to add a new furry family member to your home, HHS can certainly help you. Speaking of finding animals-loving homes, HHS continues to have solid adoption rates with 169 of the 232 animals we've served at the shelter this year so far being adopted and six returned to their owners. Kittens are coming into the shelter almost every day, so as soon as we adopt cats out, we are getting more in, and this will continue to be the case for the next few months. The president of the Hereon Humane Society, you may have heard, is a huge proponent of recycling. Not only are we actively recycling whatever we can at the shelter, but we're helping others to recycle with our massive ongoing bottle and can drive that has greatly aided us in being able to stay open during the pandemic. And in case you didn't know, you can drop off recyclable bottles and cans outside HHS anytime of the day or night. Just drive up, put their bag, you put them outside, we'll take care of the rest. Our relationship with the city of Alpena Police Department is wonderful. HHS is always happy to take animals in need that city of Alpena officers come across in the line of duty. Your police force is always easy to deal with, respectful, and a pleasure to interact with. They deserve praise for their professionalism and genuine care for the pet population of the city of Alpena. We're heartened that with the support of the city of Alpena, 232 animals who have resided at our shelter within the city limits this year have been tested, treated, vaccinated, and either have been or will be surgically sterilized, which pays huge dividends in the community for years to come. Once again, thank you so much, the city of Alpena, its staff and management for supporting and valuing the work of the Hereon Humane Society and the animals we serve. Your support really does make a difference, and it's greatly appreciated. We would love to show you around the shelter when it's convenient to you. I really mean that. Hereon Humane Society is open Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and you are welcome anytime. And whenever you would like to pave the road out to the Hereon Humane Society, we would love that. Again, it's within city limits, and boy, would that be lovely. Yeah, so it would be nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
As I said every time.
I know. I will receive and file that if someone will.
I move we receive and file the Hereon Humane Society Semiannual Report.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Report of officers for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2022 report. Anna?
All right. If anybody wants a cat nap, now would be the time to take one. So this is the report as of, or at June 30, 2022, which is the end of our previous fiscal year, so budget would be at 100%. I'd like to draw your attention to the bottom line. Can you scroll it up a little bit so I can see the bottom line? There you go. So in the amended budget column, it shows revenue over expenditures of $357,520. That is a huge swing from where, from the budget that we originally approved last year. That one called for a deficit of $233,000, so that's a swing of $500,000. Much of that, I would say, is attributed to the personal property tax reimbursement that we got in May, and we are told not to budget for that because it's not a guaranteed thing every year. So I didn't budget for it, but ended up being well over $300,000. So that was a surprise. So also to keep in mind with this is that these numbers are very, very preliminary. There is no accruals or adjusting entries or anything like that in it yet. So this will change. The actual line at the bottom, $124,638, is where we are actually, that $357 number is where we budget to be. So where we actually are right now is 124,638 over expenditures. Going back up to the green section, the revenue, amended budget, we amended it to just over $11 million for the year. We are at $10 million, so we are at 91.46% of the budget. We, we are past where we were a year ago, which was just over $10 million. Some of the explanation of variance over to the right side. So in public safety, we're only at 74% of the budget has been received. That is due to liquor license, that liquor license revenue that is down considerably. Also, a federal fire grant of $46,000 has not been received. Ambulance transport fees are only at 64% of the budget, but that's where the big accrual comes in at the end of the year. Also, the funding from the county for an ambulance has not been received. Moving down to public works, we're at 95%. There's some recycling grant revenue that has not been received. Community and economic development is doing very well at 157% of budget. That is due to marijuana permit revenue. And then also zoning fees exceeded what we budgeted. Moving down to recreation and culture, we're at 104% of budget, and that was because of rent on miscellaneous facilities was higher than we had anticipated. The transfers in is at 56%, and what this one is, is projects that we were going to use ARPA fund money for, and we've only had two projects that were completed that we could do that for. So the remaining $20,000 is for the fire kitchen. So that will just be transferred in the current fiscal year in '23. Any questions on revenue? No? Okay. So moving down to the blue section, the expenditures, not a whole lot to say here. We are at 93%. The one that is really low is recreation and culture at 81%, and that's just because there was over $83,000 in capital expenditures that was not used. So not quite sure if those are projects that are just going to happen, like it's going to be carryover maybe, and we'll just do them in the current fiscal year. So if we were to add $357,000 to our fund balance, we'd probably push that percentage up to, I'm guessing, over 40%, which is, as you know, double our fund balance policy maximum. And that may also go up because of carryover projects that weren't completed in this fiscal year or in fiscal year '22. So that will also be moved to next year. So we do, I mean, as you know, the budget, the current budget that was approved, it was over $600,000 that we were planning to take from fund balance. So that, at that time, based on a 38.5% fund balance, I was estimating would drop it to about 26%. But if we increase, I don't know. It'll be interesting to see where this ends up. We may have to do more projects or there is. do more projects. Or, um, there is suggestions in the fund balance policy of how we have to spend that money. Any questions on this page?
Uh, no. I'm assuming that at some point, once your accrual is finished, staff will make some sort of recommendation as far as what policy is and recommendations for that.
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay. Next page, please, Charlie. Okay, so this is the cash balances and investments. Um, it looks a little bit different, because we put in, um, investments like bonds and treasury notes and that kind of thing, so you can see what that balance actually consists of. Um, there's four funds, major streets, local streets, uh, sewer and water, that have a high cash balance right now as compared to previous years, because time did not allow for these projects to be bid. So, I think, I think engineering is, is gonna try to do these projects in the next fiscal year. When I say next, I mean '23, the one that we're currently in. Um, general custodial fund, that balance is really high as compared to the previous year, and that was because of the payment from the bio-refinery. Um, we didn't actually pay it out to the entities until July, so at June 30, it was still in the fund. Going down to retirement, um, our retirement fund is not doing so well. Um, as you know, the market is not great. I just looked at our year, our report for the year just real quickly, and, um, we've lost 5.8 million in market value. So, these number, what's that?
Parts.
Yes. So, these numbers right here are book values, and for comparison, the book value at 33122 was 25.3 million, so now we're at 24.8 million, while the market value decreased from 31 million to 26.9 million on June 30. And June 30 is the, the cutoff date that the actuary uses as the valuation of assets for our, um, for what she determines that we need to pay in for the next year. Um, and, uh, retiree healthcare, that one is better. I'm assuming it's because of our annual contribution that we normally make in... Hmm. That actually doesn't make sense, because we, we pay that in July. Huh, not quite sure. Um, so the book value at 331 was 1.93 million, so it did go down, but still higher than a year ago. While the market value decreased from 2.15 million on 331 to 1.88 million. That's a lot of numbers. Uh, one more page, so this is a new one that, um, we, Leland and I were reading the investment policy, and saw in there that we are required to report all of our investments to you. We had never done it in, on full display like this. So, the first section, um, oh, it's hard to see the gray, um, highlights. For the general fund, we have 2.7 million of book value, and market value is 2.6. As you can see, the terms vary from year and a half to nine and a half years. We try not to have, we, um, that was a recommendation that we had received, is to have investments at different, um, maturities as far, and length of terms. So, if you look at some of the rates, they're pretty low, like 0.3%. Um, those, I believe, are ones that we invested in during COVID, when rates just were terrible and bottomed out. Um, but we had to invest in something, so it, it's something. Um, one, um, so, on the ARPA fund, the American Rescue Plan Act, we saw that there was not an immediate need to use the funding, so we invested 300,000 in a short-term treasury bill. Um, it's only two months, it's gonna mature on August 4th, and at that time, we wanted to keep it short because the rates are going up. So, you don't want to be locked into something long-term. But once that one's up, we're gonna look at it all again, and, um, you can see that one is actually, the market value is low, too. But it's 1 and 1/4%. Um, uh, one thing I wanted to point out back up in the general fund part, is some of these do have a higher interest rate, and those are on, um, municipal bonds. Those, those pay pretty well on interest. Um, so we have quite a few of those. The DPW construction fund, uh, we have a US government bond. It's got a three-year term, that one has a really low rate, too. Um, and the equipment fund, we've got a CD and US Treasury security, US government bond. Those are various years and length, not too bad on the interest rates there. The book value's 750,000, but the market value's only 733,000 right now. So, overall, all funds, we have 3.88 million dollars in book value, but only 3.77 million in market value. That's a lot of information. Any questions on anything?
Not for me. Anyone?
Okay. Excellent. Just need a receiving file, then, if there's...
I move we receive and file on neutral report.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Ocean Creed.
Thank you. And then we drop down to new business. We have, uh, public safety carpet replacement bid, and Shannon Smolinski is here.
On July 5th, the City of Alpena received an open bid for the replacement of carpeting at the City of Alpena Public Safety Facility. The flooring in the building has deteriorated to the point where it is wearing through and warrants replacement. With budget in mind, the project was split across two fiscal years. This year, the first floor, which is showing that it's aged the worst, will be replaced. The project requested pricing for carpeting in your traditional rolls, and in addition, an alternate for carpet tiles. Bid documents were sent to six separate firms, as well as posted on the city website, and with, we received two bids on that date, um, as shown below. Young's Flooring, a local business, met with staff to discuss the project and has a good understanding of the needs of the facility during the project, and made several valid points for utilizing the proposed alternate for carpet squares, as opposed to the traditional roll stock that everybody's used to. Funds in the current budget are adequate to support this alternative. Um, for that reason, it's my recommendation that we award the public safety carpet replacement and utilize proposed alternative carpet tiles to Young's in the unit, or for the total unit prices totaling $32,447.
Questions for...
I don't have any questions. Um, so, um, I move that we award the bid to Young's Flooring, um, at the bid price of $32,447.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Ocean Creed.
Thank you, Shannon. Next is the breathing air compressor bid, and Chief Forbush is, or not.
First designated, right? Good evening, council. Um, on June 14th, 2022 sealed bids were open for a breathing air compressor to refill firefighter self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA's. Three bids were submitted as follows. Municipal Emergency Services for $54,863. Breathing Air Systems, which is a Bauer compressor, for $45,992. And Westshore Fire, which was a Mako, which is actually what we had, had pretty much specked out, was $49,989.69. The lowest bidder was Breathing Air Systems. However, they took exception to the bid specification requiring a sound deadening cabinet enclosing the compressor. The rationale for the exception was with the given budget to stay within the FEMA grant award, we were not able to offer a cabinet-style air compressor. Both of the other bidders met all bid specifications and came in slightly higher in price. Ethically, we must recommend that we accept the lowest bid that meets published bid specifications, which was Westshore Fire at $49,989.69. It should be noted that upon, uh, purchase, up to 95% of the purchase price will be reimbursed by the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. Local match may be slightly higher due to bid levels and grant guidance.
I could read that last part, Rob?
No, I'm not. No, 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 no. It was a collaborative effort, how's that?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. This has been on the CIP, so...
Yes, much needed, and we appreciate it.
Good.
We award the bid to Westshore Fire at $49,989.69.
Second. Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Ocean Creed.
And I move that we adjourn to closed session to just stop pre-cheat lodging and versus City of Alpena Tax Tribunal Appeal and labor union negotiation.
Councilmember Walchuck?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Excellent. So, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Third. I always have to do that, that's my thing.
Oh, we have to take, do we have to take local and...
Nope.
Nope.
I'm not, I'm not adjourned.
Okay.
Okay, what do we got?